I'm going to call the meeting for order. Please call the roll. Gandy?
Yes.
Esti?
Yes.
Tohill?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Great. We only have one thing on the agenda tonight, which is the consideration of ambulance service negotiations. So Elizabeth is going to give us a little bit of a summary, what's happened since our last council meeting, and then I'm sure we'll hear from John, too.
Yeah, okay. So at our last council meeting, we were discussing the next term of service for Care Ambulance. Right now, there's a current contract dispute that we're working through with Care Ambulance. And we didn't discuss this at our previous meeting because it was unclear to us. I think we kind of discussed how they had sent an email, but we were really unclear as to how seriously to take it, I guess, for lack of a better word. So, and it was pertaining to the current contract, which we were negotiating what we thought was the next contract term. So, since our previous council meeting, we met with Care Ambulance to discuss the dispute over their current contract. And we requested Care to present some alternatives just to the lump sum payment that they were requesting, or the increase per month. I think that was going to total like $170,000 per month is what they were requesting, which we also discussed in our previous council meeting. And so they came back with multiple requests. And they also let us know at that point that they would not be performing as obligated under our current contract. So I guess before I go on to talk about the requests that they made, and we're going to continue to negotiate in good faith with them over their contract dispute because it's in our contract currently that we have a dispute resolution clause where we're going to be working through them with them. Either we're going to go to mediation and then arbitration, or we're going to go straight to arbitration. But pertaining to the performance of the current contract, I guess I'll turn that over to you, John.
All right. Under our current contract, it calls for two paramedics available for the two ambulances. If an ambulance takes off for an emergency run, they need to have a paramedic onboard as well as another person that's a trained staff person. And that applies to each ambulance. And that's in the second, thank you, Melanie, that's in the second part of our contract, which is about a 15-page document. What I gave you as far as a handout only has the first couple pages, which has to do with rigs and personnel. But that is where the rub is in this. Care originally told us they were going in the hole. That was back in October. They came back after we started our process between the three governmental entity members of the 2080 getting approval to boost what they needed by $10,000 a month, which is $120,000 a year, $40,000 per entity. Each of the entities had to go through the media notice and the, in our case, the committee process recommending it to council. We got that far, but by then we got a letter in November that said, no, we're worse than we told you. We're about $900,000 in the hole. We want you to make that up. That's where Liz is coming from as far as them then suggesting we should pay them $170,000 a month instead of the increase of $10,000 a month. This took all of us by surprise. We said, whoa, whoa, that must be something new. That's definitely different than what Bob Libby had told us, and he was the head of the group, his provider. So we wanted to have a meeting with the providers, and we set that up and had that, the owners, Mr. and Mrs. Libby, on speakerphone with us, talking about the $170,000. By then, we had a letter, and this was first week of December. The letter said not only the $170,000 was now at issue, but they probably were going to need more than that. And it looked like instead of $120,000 divided three ways, $40,000 or even $90,000 more, which they had suggested in between, that the $170,000 was to be paid between now and the end of the contract, October 1st. They wanted to make up their losses. And we had some discussion with them. We were told by their staff executives that they have been paying two and three times the going rate for what they call travel or paramedics, that instead of $35 to $45 an hour for a paramedic, they were paying $125, $135 an hour to get people in to cover the staffing, and that the staffing required by our contract is 24 hours a day. Very expensive proposition as far as personnel costs under that clause of the contract. And they basically were telling us they just couldn't do it anymore. So part of the communications from Mrs. Libby said that after December 12th, they would only be providing one fully-staffed, contract-compliant ambulance. After January 3rd, they were going to be less able to comply than they were then because apparently the travelers were going to leave. And we were going to be in a position where we had one ambulance that was fully compliant, one ambulance that was partially compliant, and they were proposing that we go with a second ambulance that might not be completely a life-support ambulance, and that it would be available basically business days from 8:00 to 8:00, which are the prime hours. But then there would be a period overnight when we didn't have the second emergency vehicle available. This prompted us at the 2080 agency level to both tell them, the Libbys, that we wanted to go to the table with them and talk this through, that we were open to suggestions, but not $170,000 a month suggestion. And at the same time, the three members of the 2080 asked the lawyers for the member bodies on the 2080, is there something we can do to slow this down? So we had another meeting over at the county attorney's office on a Saturday morning two weekends ago. That meeting led to us discussing about informing them in writing that they were in breach, but also, we had done that on December 13th. So we were running out of time on the breach response. And at the same time, we talked about a possible specific performance contract lawsuit. They still, probably up until January 3rd, aren't in the extent of a breach where we could file a specific performance lawsuit, but they're definitely in a partial breach. They haven't corrected it to date. The three attorneys drafted a, what we call an equity action, to ask for a meantime restraining order, little explanation. There is something that, when you call a meantime restraining order, it is an immediate mandate that tells a defendant, you either can't stop what you're doing, you have to keep on performing, or in some instances, you tell them to stop what you're doing immediately, and we'll have a hearing on it as fast as we can. So the meantime restraining order that we applied for, essentially, the documentation on it was on file the 23rd of December. You have it in your hands. We'll talk about that here in a minute. But it amounts to a restraining order that the court entered, basically saying, things should stay the same until we have a hearing on this on January 3rd. And on January 3rd, if everything in the file supports this, the court will entertain making this what is called a temporary injunction, which stays in place until we have a more permanent hearing or trial on this, which is usually months out. But at this point, we're in a little niche where we've got a partial breach. We don't have it complied with. On January 3rd, we'll see where we are. But if services have been pulled, we'll be basically telling the court that we can't let this happen, that the service provider that we have a contract with knows that we have limitations as far as what else is available to fill the void. Filling the void is essentially coming back to mutual aid agreements that we have with the other care providers in the surrounding counties. But Care Ambulance basically is Jefferson County's care provider. So we are in a situation where after January 3rd, if they do what they're saying they're going to do, we'll be asking the court to, basically under penalty of contempt, tell them they can't just pull back. And at the meantime, we're going to continue to have our proposal out on the table, that we either get into mediation or arbitration. We try to figure out something we can do for the duration of their contract. And if we don't get an agreement on that, we'll be back in front of the court pushing issues about contempt under the injunction. But we'll also be filing a specific performance contract lawsuit. And goes without saying that when you sue an entity, they don't like that very much. It's not an inducement to them to discuss with us a renewal of the contract, which is what we thought we were going to attempt to do back in September. And frankly, our board was happy with their service in September. And we didn't know the hole that they were later telling us they were in until mid-October. We had indications that they were losing money on their P&Ls that came up in the quarterly reports, but no understanding we were losing that much money, or they were losing that much money, and no understanding that we were the sick dog in the litter, so to speak. They have other divisions of Care Ambulance that apparently are profitable. And their response to us in the verbal conversations was, why are we in a position where we have to carry your county where we are having trouble with staffing, having trouble with keeping up with your contract requirements? And they have had assorted reasons for personnel issues. Staffing has left, is my understanding, at times, and it's expensive to replace. And I don't think that's on our 2080 agency board. But I think there may be some things going on in the community that we will find out as we go along, either in mediation or arbitration. In the meantime, we've carefully drafted a piece of litigation. Right now, our recourse as far as having injunctive relief is to stop the hammer from falling on January 3rd. And so I'll tell you what you have in front of you. And this has already been served on them at their local business division headquarters. Since they are a corporate entity, they're an LLC, we can serve them like a corporation at any location that is an office of business for them. And they have a business manager out there. They also have the principals for that entity, Bob and Denise, that are available for service now that we've served their business entity. And they also have a registered agent, which is Bob. Those matters of service will take place this week. But we did do the one the same day that this was filed, right before Christmas. So it couldn't have been probably a more ironic timing as far as, I don't like to sue people on Christmas Eve. But the other side of it is, the contract timing and the notices from them as far as when they were pulling back services fell right after the beginning of the new year. And part of it fell in the week before the Christmas Eve week. So we're pretty much in a box. We had to do this, we felt. And what you have in front of you is the instructions for the sheriff to take the papers to them, a copy of the order that sets a hearing for January 3rd at 1:30 PM over the petition for injunctive relief. It also says that the defendant shall continue to perform their obligations under the contract that they have indicated in correspondence with plaintiff they are able to perform. This order shall regard it as an immediate meantime restraining order in effect until time of hearing or as further ordered by the court. Now, there's going to be a limited amount of time on the hearing at that point. I expect that between three lawyers on our side and whoever they lawyer up with, we can consume more than 30 minutes of time just listening to lawyers talk. And that's probably going to be what Judge Gookin says, too, that 30 minutes isn't enough time for four lawyers to really talk, but it's probably enough time for him to get a flavor as far as what needs to happen in the short term. At that point, if Care Ambulance says they will agree to continue the contract and for service for a period of time until we have a longer hearing, the next stage in injunctive relief is called a preliminary injunction. That is usually intended to run from the time of this meantime, short-term injunction, all the way up to the time when you have a trial on the main issues and the merits of the case. So that could be an injunction that lasts for months as far as compelling them to do certain things or prohibiting them from doing certain things. If we file a contract suit for specific performance, it will lay things out in such a way that they will have the full group of rules that apply to them under the rules of civil procedure. I would expect we'll be back and forth with legal pleadings throughout the spring. It will be in district court, civil actions. At a minimum, they take 120 to 180 days just to get through the preliminaries as far as disclosures, initial discovery, and the things that it takes to get it set for trial. So it's preliminary injunction that ultimately we'll be arguing next. That may take us an afternoon hearing, and it'll be sometime this spring. I've had something else in a civil case where I inquired about timing from our court administrator. The earliest the court administrator said they could give us an afternoon for a hearing was mid-April. So this isn't going to go quickly once we're into the deeper water. Hopefully, we'll be also moving along with mediation and the alternative dispute resolution method of arbitration that our contract calls for. We've asked them if they would consider waiving mediation and moving right to arbitration, as Liz described. We don't know what their response is to that right now. But if we would go into arbitration, that is a quicker route than anything I've described to you as far as civil process. We would still, we would pick an arbitrator, they would pick an arbitrator. The two arbitrators under the arbitration, we will pick a third neutral. And then they become our hearing body. And they still have rules for 30 days and 60 days of exchange times between the parties. I liken it sort of to what happens in an appeal where one side files something, the other side gets a certain amount of time, usually at least 30 days, to do something back. And eventually, it's all submitted to the panel of arbitrators. And they make a decision, which all three of our governmental entity bodies have to agree we will abide by, and Care Ambulance has to agree they will abide by if we leave it out there. But that's the faster course, if we can get that agreed to. If it's not agreed to, we could still be arguing this and having a trial that doesn't take place until after their contract expires. And that's next October 1st. So in the meantime, we're going to have to run as fast as our shoes will work to see what else we can do about October 1st of 2023. And like I say, nobody stays on your friendly side after you sue them. And if we're going to do a second suit on contract besides this injunctive relief, they're going to like us even less. So mechanically, those are the things we can do. The rules allow us mediation, arbitration, injunctive relief, and the contract suit if they are in for a bigger breach on January 3rd, and that's what they tell us. But that's as much as I can pretty much explain to you now, except what you have in front of you besides telling the sheriff what to do, the notice that we gave them about their right to respond, and that they are in court, and 35-paragraph injunctive relief petition accompanied by some exhibits, which are a chain of emails and pieces of the contract, and an affidavit from our chairman of our board, Julie Griesen, which pretty much, in a little different wording, restates things that are in the petition. And then a statement, called a 1504 statement, which is telling the court that we have not applied for this kind of injunctive relief before, and that we haven't been refused this kind of relief before. So all of those things are in the package you have. I didn't give you the full 15 pages of contract. About 10 of it is about things that people in dictionaries care about. But as far as our terms, the personnel terms, the rigs, the things that it takes to terminate it or to correct the breach, those are the things we'll be arguing about with them probably into the next few months. So I have Vanessa Willman worked on this some, Chauncey Molding and I worked on it a bunch. Chauncey's at a, I believe it's a birthday party for a 10-year-old right now. But he said he'd have his cellphone turned on in his coat pocket if we have anything we want to ask him. He's available to contact, and he's essentially, I think, ready to go through the hoops on this pleading with the board of supervisors between now and January 3rd also. But January 3rd in the afternoon, we're going to have a half-hour argument about this. At this point, we, even though it's been served for a few days with the local division of the ambulance service as a corporate entity, we haven't heard from any law firm yet. We were aware that they had a law firm that helped them with contract drafting, but I don't know if there's a law firm that might help them with litigation. So we will find that out sometime between now and the 3rd, so we'll have more to report. Well, right now, I think Liz and I are both available for questions.
Also, John, it's my understanding, too, in the interim, we're kind of waiting to see if we're going to be going into mediation and or arbitration before our next council meeting, which was something that we wanted to discuss also, maybe potentially some of the terms that the board felt we could work with Care Ambulance on as we continue to work through this dispute.
Yeah, we had Vanessa write a letter indicating that while we couldn't accept $170,000 a month and that we were troubled by the $90,000 proposal before that, that we were open to two or three of their suggestions in the letter they sent saying that things were going to be all different. And so before we get to the point where we file a contract-specific performance lawsuit, we want to find out if they will mediate with us. If they mediate with us, some of this stuff can be talked through, and maybe we can reach mutual agreements on some of it. We have interests in the ambulance facility, their equipment, probably personnel that live in the area and that sort of thing, even if they just bolt, even if they say they don't want to do it with us anymore. I don't think they'll say that with a court over their shoulder saying, well, you got a contract. If you don't do it, you're in for damages. And we don't want the public at risk. We can try to work something out with some neighboring service, but nobody's rushing to come to our aid right now. Mutual aid is usually on a as-available-as-called basis. We have, all of the surrounding counties have mutual aid agreements with us, but none of them have been following this closely. In fact, I had someone tell me the other day that they thought all the trouble was up in Washington County and over at Brighton. And I said, well, don't believe everything you read in the newspapers. But anyway, it was not our turn to talk yet, so.
So, John?
Yeah.
Is Care, as I understand it, Care Ambulance Service LLC, the service that they're providing to Jefferson County, is not a separate legal entity from the company that provides services in other areas? Is that correct?
I think it's a division of Care. They were told when they-
What makes you think it's a division?
They had some prior experience with, like PPP during the pandemic and so forth, where they wanted more help from state agency than they were entitled, or they were told they were entitled. And it was partly because their entities are basically all owned by Bob and his wife.
So do we have any, just to be clear, because I guess what I'm hearing you say is they are profitable as a company, but they are not profitable in this particular service area. Is that right?
That's sort of the way, inside our 2080 agency discussion, we talked with Larry Peach a little bit, who is the financial overseer of the 2080 funds. And he said, well, they were showing up with losses on their local statements they were giving us quarterly. But he still believed that they were profitable.
We believe it?
He believed it. Larry Peach did.
Yeah, because I don't know that we have any evidence that this entity is separate.
It's my understanding, too, that during the contract negotiations, you guys negotiated that we wouldn't be delving into their other financial statements.
But yet they're relying on that. They're telling us, as I understand it, that they're relying on income from other areas to prop up or support the losses they're carrying here.
And they're suggesting also in these emails that their personnel from Iowa City can come down here and fill in, which tells me that they're one corporation.
Well, that's what they've been doing.
Sorry. They're exchanging personnel from Iowa City down here, what they're suggesting in one email. I mean, is that, what does that suggest?
Yeah, they told us the names of two of the personnel from Iowa City that came down that are paramedic-qualified. And I believe Chris was one of them, Chris Bodenstadt. And basically, he described a situation where their staffing is stretched, but they've been covering our contract, partly with people from Iowa City. And some of their workings in Iowa City are not the life-saving assistance that we have in our ALS ambulances here. They're basically daytime transports of people from one health facility to another, not an emergency-based service. And because of that, they did have some available people that could rotate down here. And that actually sounded like a pretty good deal until they start talking about, but that's all going to end, and they can't keep on doing that. that's all going to end, and they can't keep on doing that. At that point, you know, the other people that were covering it were traveler paramedics at three times the cost, so.
So I guess with the idea, with the ask that they're suggesting, which is pretty significant, no, it's very significant, I just want to make sure that the council, and I think the other partners in the agency, are getting accurate information. This is not something we contemplated when we negotiated the contract. Do we know whether or not the financial information they provided to us has been audited?
Don't believe it has.
I will say also that the ask, their initial ask, has changed since our previous discussion with them, and I think that nobody on the board was willing to just take it at face value. But because we continue to work through this dispute, it was important to bring it to council also to discuss what we did feel comfortable with.
And we've been working for a month, getting the three agency members to have their local individual governmental entities approve the $10,000 a month increase ask.
Which is a matter of public record that the city council has approved that.
Yeah, we did what we were supposed to as far as our media notices and had our committee recommend, et cetera. After we did that, we, in a course of twenty-four hours, December 5th, December 6th, we got an ask for $90,000, and then we had a letter repeating the $90,000 because we were sort of in disbelief. And the $90,000 was supposed to be paid each month until October, basically to cover a shortfall they had of about $900,000. Well, everybody's reaction that read that among our 2080 group was, well, we didn't guarantee them a profit, and we certainly didn't guarantee absorption of any of their operating loss during the remainder of the contract, at which point the letter on December 6th came, not only do we want the $90,000 makeup money, but it's going to take us to perform what you need between now and October 1st, $170,000 a month, which the math on that's a million and a half for the remainder of our service contract year. And nobody had a positive reaction to that. I mean, that is way off the chart compared to anything in the history of the ambulance 2080 has ever been out there. We have had two of the ambulance services in the past audited, back when Luca and Miller ran it. We had a year where we looked at things. Eventually, they got kind of in a push and shove, and they sold it. Then the guy that took it over and was called American Ambulance, Steve Bergmeyer, asked him every year for the figures and the audit information and so forth. We eventually had him audited by TDT here in town when we were in the middle of a lawsuit about two and a half years in. And we found out that out of six years they operated, four of the years were profitable, two of the years they didn't need the subsidy, the rest of the years they needed the subsidy, but they were not losing money. So, and the subsidy back then was about $5,000 a month less than it is now. So we're at a point right now where we thought we had a reasonable levy. We didn't see how badly the pandemic was stretching things as far as personnel deeds, signing bonuses to personnel, double and triple salaries. And I don't think anybody on our 2080 agency imagined what the cost looks like day-to-day when you're putting somebody that's a traveler in a 24-hour shift. Twenty-four hours times $135 is, you know, lots of people would quit their jobs in the law office and go to work.
I would think that we're going to want, as we go forward, we're absolutely going to want to go forward. We're talking about these large increases that are suggested. We're going to want to have our own accounting people review the information to make sure it's accurate.
Yes, and I think also, sorry, I think also, you know, discussing there with members at the hospital as well, you know, could verify that, sure, staffing has definitely, you know, increased the cost of staffing, and then insurance increases, right? Like about 30%. So I don't think, I think that we're not disputing that they have incurred some increased costs that were perhaps unforeseeable. I think that the amount of, you know, that's what we're disputing, and that's what we're kind of going back and forth with.
Right, right. So I think whatever we can do as we move forward with this, we're going to need our own independent auditing of their financial records, just to be sure that they have confidence in what they're proposing or suggesting.
And I think the way we'll get the records is probably through the civil litigation poll. I don't think they're going to offer them up to us, maybe in mediation, but maybe not. And the rest of the divisions of their company are news to us as far as how successful or unsuccessful they've been. But this whole thing with them having a $900,000 operating loss during the period of our contract, that was news to us since mid-October.
And also to clarify, we were previously discussing renewing their contract in October, but now we're also discussing disputes. So, you know, because of previous council meeting, we were talking about, oh, yeah, October 1st, we're going to increase the subsidy, and that was what we were operating with on the board as well. And now it is definitely a, let's increase the cost starting January in the middle of the contract, so.
And John, just to be clear, I think I heard you say that there's nothing in the contract that says that we have to make up for their losses if they have a loss in this area.
Not a thing. And they bid it, and when they bid it, we were looking at them as, are you sure you can do this? And they didn't seem bothered by it at the time. We had, earlier about six months, we had meetings with Mount Pleasant Health Center, or Henry County Health Center, to see whether there was any likelihood we might merge a service. And they kind of fell off from us. I think we had a consultant in there too, that was a national firm that looked at our scenario too. And they questioned why Mount Pleasant would fall away from us, but they also questioned whether Mount Pleasant was as successful as Mount Pleasant was holding themselves out to be. They came over and did a presentation to our 2080. Turns out, they weren't. But as far as us and any red flags back when the bid went on and so forth, we didn't have any. But the bid was pre-pandemic, and so we can blame some of the pandemic, and we can blame some inflation and so forth. But, I mean, the persons I listened to closely at the 2080 were Larry Peach, Stacy Worley from the Emergency Room Group, and the hospital administrators. They were talking about 30%, 35% increases in insurance, which is already a pretty high price in the health field. And they were talking about double and triple salaries for traveling staff that were coming in, and they were talking about traveler nurses, $60,000, $70,000 a year jobs that they were paying up to $140,000, $150,000 yearly salary to keep somebody available at a certain level of qualification in nursing. And they, basically, Brian Hunger said, we cannot do that on a sustained basis, that we have to fall away from that. He understood what they were talking about as far as the, sort of the shock factor, as far as the bigger costs that you don't see coming. And so, I mean, we're trying to have our eyes open as far as the 2080 agency, but at the same time, absolutely right. There's nothing in the contract that requires us to pick up a dime of their net operating loss. And I'm sure they've used the net operating loss to write off against other things that are profitable. They would be foolish in business if they didn't. But the rest of the story is, if we've got, right now, I think they probably are aware we've got the hospital levy that we've been doing the ambulance out of for the last, probably back into the 90s. We've also got another emergency services levy that the legislatures had in place for about the last 20 years that we really haven't been doing much with. Nobody wants to say the word new levy or new taxes because it's out there. How do you get to a situation where you increase your subsidy by two or three times what you've ever done in the past just to cover something that's a sign of the times? I don't have a good political answer for you on that. I think it's a political choice. If you don't want to do it that way, you either have to figure out if you're going to settle for less service, if you're going to do something that's a risk situation. Nobody wants that. But at the same time, I think you're still, for your staffing levels on what we're used to, if it was a public entity taking over the operation, it's still going to cost that much. But you've got to have those qualified people doing it. And I don't think we can turn our firemen into paramedics overnight, and I don't think we can turn a bunch of the people that probably think there's a better answer into a going service in a few months. I think this is something that's got to evolve, even if we go for a different approach than a private provider. The other things we're looking into, besides the accounting factor and possible audit and so forth, is what are the past tracks? What is the history of this service provider? And they have pulled out before in another situation over at Grinnell. They've also been up at Waterloo, apparently. Waterloo and Grinnell both had Unity Point taking over facilities that weren't going to contract with Care. Unity Point put its own service in place. And, you know, I guess Unity Point must have had an idea on how to do it, because they're still doing it at both those places. But I haven't talked to anybody at Unity Point.
And do we know, in some ways it's irrelevant, but just out of curiosity, are they providing service in counties similar to Jefferson County? And are they struggling as much as they are here, or do we know?
We're the only 911 provider that Care provides. Otherwise, they're essentially a transport service in the Iowa City Corvale area.
Well, what is the 111 ALB on Keesock? I have ambulance service.
You're all public? I'm not sure. I haven't looked into that, but.
I thought Atoma Regional ran theirs.
No? I don't know.
Yes, Atoma Regional runs the 111. It's on the side of all their rigs.
Davis County Hospital runs theirs, Van Buren County Hospital runs theirs.
How are they able to?
So, Doug, just so the public can hear, Lee says that Van Buren County Hospital and Davis County, which said Davis County Hospital run their own service.
And Atoma Regional.
And Atoma Regional, yeah.
Which is what one would expect, the hospital to run the ambulance service. Are they providing fewer services than we're providing?
Lee, why don't you come, Lee, go ahead and come to the microphone, because Doug's going to ask you a question, it looks like.
So are Keesock or Davis County providing fewer services than Jefferson County?
They're providing ALS services, which is advanced life-
We're asking for.
-support, yes. So is Van Buren. Mahaska County is a public-based service. Washington County is obviously a county-based service. Lee County is a county-based service. Henry County is in their health center. It's a hospital-based public service. I know I'm missing one. Somebody said Kika County, it's hospital-based.
Does Atoma Regional do all of Waplo County or just in town?
They do all of Waplo County.
They do all of Waplo County.
Right. So we are the only private ambulance service in southeast Iowa, going from Lee County to Des Moines County.
So how are these?
I'm trying to think, Jason, do you know, is there one, I think there's one fire department-based?
Centerville.
Centerville, okay.
So, Lee, do you know how these public entities are being funded?
Well, they're being funded by tax dollars.
Well, I know, but do they have special levying?
I suppose that they, you know, that they could be. Obviously, Washington County is supplying the ointment because they have at their disposal, you know, a significant amount of casino dollars that they can apply to things. But, and the only thing that I would say in regards to, and John's 100% correct, I mean, if we go public, which everybody knows, or most of you know, I've long supported a public option, but if you go public, he's right, you know, it's going to be tax dollars. But what I would remind everybody is, is that while, I'm not suggesting that we would make any money at this. In fact, I would suggest that, and I've said this to Aaron, if we broke even, I would consider that a success, not that I would anticipate that that would be the case. But a public service is not in the business to make a profit. So we can actually do it at a lower cost in terms of, and again, I don't think profit's a dirty word, and I'm not finding fault with Care in terms of wanting to make a profit. I'm just simply saying that we wouldn't have that need to make a profit. We would just, we would be providing a service. I use the Sheriff's Department, for example. If making a profit is the requirement to provide an essential service, then we need to close down the Sheriff's Department because we're not making a profit. And the other thing that I would say, just, and I don't know if this is pertinent, John or not, but they have three transfer entities in Iowa City. There's one for the hospital, one for the VA, and then they have what's called mobile care, which is for pediatrics. Those three contracts probably generate several million dollars. And I'm not saying that they're, you know, to your question, Paul, I don't have an answer whether the three separate entities, whether it's all one conglomerate or not, I have no idea. John's right, their care at home shut down, part of it was staffing problems. Waterloo is gone, Grinnell is gone. They do have an air care service, which I believe is a partnership. And, you know, staffing is an issue, and the question on the council's mind would be, well, what makes it, what would make us think that we could have any less staffing problems than they do? All I can tell you is, is that I'm confident that we would be able to staff it with paramedics if it went to a county-based service. Beyond that, what the internal problems are in relationship money is an issue. One of the gentlemen's that John mentioned in the meeting, I believe his name was Ian from Iowa City, was a paramedic that they had up there along with Chris, of course-
Can I jump in here?
Sure.
Why would you be confident that we could staff it if the Care is having a problem? What's the difference?
Well, I think basically because the local paramedics that we have here don't want to work for Care. I don't know how else to put it. I'm not trying to be a horse's patootie. I just, but I do believe that if it went to a county-based service, they're confident, or let me rephrase that, if it went to a public service, they're confident in the public service, they're confident in the way that the operation would be ran, I guess you'd say. This Ian that I was referencing, he's going to become, from what I understand, a traveling paramedic. So, you know, they are going to, as Chris indicated, they're going to lose that body up there as well. Care has a paramedic that's working here locally that's going to retire.
So let's kind of go back on track, and that is, these are all future things that, you know, obviously, the group needs to talk about. So coming back to just the negotiations at this point, John, is there any decisions we need to make tonight?
Between now and January 3rd, we're just going to have to see if anything's pulled back. January 3rd, I mean, if it's cold turkey on January 3rd, that'll be part of the questions in the court hearing that the district court judge is going to want to know, are they performing or not? At that point, what we have as a plan after that, all that I can think of as far as the way we had it set up was if we had a shortage that was temporary, we'd immediately go out and seek out mutual aid in the surrounding county entities and see who would come to our assistance. And that's been said to us a few times by other emergency personnel in our area, but nobody says they can guarantee somebody will come when we send out the call. And that's an awkward position to be in, because even though we have mutual aid- And that's an awkward position to be in because even though we have mutual aid agreements, it's the same story with firefighters. Sometimes you get three responses and sometimes you get two responses, or you get everybody is already out fighting a grass fire. And you don't like to hear that news. But in this situation, if we only have a third of the response we're hoping for when we set out on mutual aid, that's a public risk.
Speaking of mutual aid, what is our obligation to provide mutual aid? That article that came out about us being in Keokuk when a call came in and it took 21 minutes for somebody to get to the ambulance house before they even left is an issue.
That was a little unusual case. Somebody had no knowledge of the geography of the situation and missed going under a railroad viaduct, and it delayed them by 20 minutes. And the people north of that came down from Keokuk County and serviced the problem in the time it was taking our side of the railroad tracks to figure out where to get through. That's my understanding of that particular story. But other than that, Keokuk County northwest of Pekin comes into some of our county terrain for a little bit because people up there are more comfortable calling them and betting on them getting here before somebody from down here to Fairfield. That's the only place in the county like that.
Not to, the way I understood it, we were helping in Keokuk County.
If, yeah, if we went up there on mutual aid, it's because we have an obligation, everybody who have a mutual aid agreement, to be mutual. And essentially, so we do go out at times if there's a bad accident, if there's something like that, fire or ambulance or law enforcement. We have mutual aid agreements in all of those public safety areas.
But there wasn't a second crew housed, so it took them 21 minutes to get to the station before they even left? And that was the viaduct issue? They didn't know how to get to the station or, you know? I'm not, I'm not questioning you.
I don't know how long it took them to get to the station time. I don't know.
Okay. I mean, that's going to be an issue forthcoming, especially if we don't have a second.
Yeah.
Well, and you have traveling people who don't know the area.
Right.
But John, sorry, go ahead.
I was just going to ask one more question. Do we still, we still own two of the ambulances, and there's three there?
Correct.
There are three there, okay.
Yeah. And there were some issues, I thought, that we were going to be discussing with the council tonight, anticipation and mediation or arbitration. Has that, has that changed with the selling of our injunction?
No, no, I think there are things that if we go into mediation, the idea of where we would be in October also focused on things like their facility south of the four lane. They indicated an interest in a sale. If we wanted to buy that, they would have a price for it. They've spent, I think, around $350,000 down there. I think that that's not their price, they want more than that. But they were welcomed into the county, and they added a large Morton building with facilities to house the ambulances, keep them out of the weather. There are some other things they say they spent on it that you can only, again, it's another area to audit what their building costs were down there. But I know approximately what they paid for the ranch-style house that is their office. I know approximately what it costs to put up a Morton building, but you can put a lot more into a Morton building than just the shell, so...
Is that all part of their profit and loss calculation?
They, in their email, they talk like that was a separate issue.
Is that the actual, that they're giving you, that this is part of their loss?
They haven't really broke it out that finely, but the emails talk like that was over and above their problems with staffing and personnel costs. So, both Liz and I, I think, agree that's the way it was presented.
Mm-hmm. Some of their capital outlays were considered their losses. But also, they suggested not only selling us their current location in the buildings, but also including an ambulance in that price, which is something that the board was potentially interested in because we're considering having to purchase another ambulance anyway.
Fourth one or a replacement?
Replacement.
Replacement.
So, and this, I mean, would all be pending an assessment of the property and a discussion about the price and, you know, making sure that ambulance would be sufficient.
Plus, they have expensive equipment that if we took that off their hands coming into a new contract term, one of their fancy cots costs $30,000, $40,000. It's easier on the backs of the ambulance attendants because it sort of slips into some slots inside the ambulance and saves people's backs. But it's sophisticated enough and hydraulic enough that it, it's not your ordinary cot that you see around the hospital. I don't know enough about it, I can't think of the name of the cot, but they told us that they had different cots ordered for the ambulance rigs when we were buying the rigs we have now, and they were high-priced.
Buying, oh, go ahead, Doug, sorry.
Just confused here. We own two of the ambulances, the 28E, they own the third ambulance. And we're obligated to replace two of those whenever, the two, whenever they fail?
Yeah, and that's...
So, that's part of our normal expenses.
That's something, yeah, that we were budgeted for.
Is that dealt into the 1.700,000?
So, I will say that since our last meeting with them, and we suggested perhaps, you know, negotiating some other areas of the contract, they did come back with some different potential ideas, one of them being that we purchased the existing location and the ambulance and some of the supplies. There was also a different ask, monthly payment of $60,000 per month instead of what they were asking, which was $170,000 per month. So, and so that was another area where we were hoping perhaps we could negotiate with them. They also presented some other ideas that we were not so keen on, partially because it would change the nature of their relationship to the board. Right now, they're an independent contractor, so some of the, some of the suggestions that they had would kind of change that fundamental nature of the relationship with them.
They were suggesting that we would buy the building and maintain them as well?
We would buy the building, we would maintain it. Perhaps we were talking about potentially leasing it back to them, but this was kind of like, these are just areas where we thought perhaps we could negotiate with them, and perhaps we could negotiate a different increase in their monthly payment. Maybe not to the tune of $60,000, but we were considering maybe $10,000. But that's something we could discuss also, and split between the three entities.
So, one of our problems and the hospital's problems will be, where are we going to find the money? If we were to, because we have ceilings on our tax levies as well, we can't just tax however much we want.
Right. And this is all obviously current contract negotiation, so, you know, it would be if we discuss increasing their monthly payment, it would be, you know, potentially starting whenever we could negotiate it or mediate it or arbitrate it, if that's the way that it went, starting January.
So, are you looking from the council, a possible okay to purchase equipment to be in negotiation or up to a certain amount per month payment or...
I think perhaps maybe an up to a certain amount per month payment. I think the potential purchase of the location, we would need, you know, to have it assessed. There's a lot that would have to go into that. I guess it would just be kind of gauging council's feeling about that, you know, based on an assessment, and then up to a certain monthly amount, which would be, it would be $10,000 additional per month divided between the three entities for the nine months, and so it would be a total of $30,000 for the remainder of the contract. And this is all so that we can continue these good faith contract negotiations as we work through this dispute and potentially through mediation or arbitration.
And then we'd provide full services as described in the existing contract.
And that would be, that would be pursuant, obviously, to this injunction that is working, you know, concurrent with this dispute resolution.
One of my worries is, are they fantasizing and not projecting realistically? And we're going to come down, you know, mid-May or April, that they forgot something, or they have another problem that they didn't factor into their calculation like they did before, apparently.
Right. Obviously, that's a concern. You know, when they came back to the board with a list of potential suggestions that we could negotiate, and staffing was one of them, but I think that their suggestion was something that we were not... Again, it would change that fundamental nature of the relationship between the board and CARE, so we weren't interested in that. Right now, they are in charge of their staffing, they're in charge of their employees, that's because they're an independent contractor, and we don't want to be responsible for that.
So, what are you looking for the council to do?
So, right now...
Now, what's your bottom line, really? What do you think is...
The bottom line, what I think is that...
What do you need from the council right now? Is that that $10,000, which ultimately is $30,000?
Ultimately, it would be $30,000 for the remainder of the contract.
Which is January through September?
Would be January through September.
So, in addition to the injunction...
Just to be clear, the $40,000 we approved earlier was to be applied to next year's contract.
That was going to be for next year's contract, right.
It's a separate amount of money.
Separate, and I think that that is no longer something that we're discussing because we're just kind of working through this immediate contract dispute.
Right. So, the idea would be, if I understand it correctly, is we're seeking an injunction, so they're going to perform according to the contract, but we will provide a sweetener to the contract now. We'd like, you'd like permission from the council to be able to offer up to the council's one-third of $10,000 additional per month through October.
Because we are continuing to work through this dispute, as we have to do under the contract.
Right, okay.
There are provisions in the contract that if they argued them, probably a court would feel, well, there has to be some give and take in this. There has to be some way back to this. We wouldn't have negotiated a contract that was impossible to perform. They wouldn't have bid on a contract that was impossible to perform. So, how do you get back to the level where both performance is possible, but you're not burying yourself in a tax that probably none of the boards would approve? But right now, the way I see it, the emergency services levy has hardly been approached. The hospital levy is always what we've been used. If we're going that direction for the next contract round, October 1, 2023, anyway, we might as well study that closely and see if it gets us there. I don't think we've got a surplus that we can just cough up the $30,000 amount up to from our entities unless somebody didn't tell me something. But I'm looking at Aaron, and he's not going. Yeah, 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 yeah. It's that kind of a scenario where we're already committed a half a year in to the way we're spending our money. And even if we, you know, I think we felt we could get to $10,000 a month from somewhere in...
In October?
In October.
In October, but that's new fiscal...
I'm talking about right between now and the end of September, that's a total of $30,000.
Yep.
Can that come from general fund?
Or lost?
Well, we didn't budget it, so we would have to do a budget amendment in order to do that.
But the money's there, though.
We can find that.
There's a balance in the lost?
My question, are we talking $30,000 a month? Are we talking just $30,000 total?
Like 33, 33 per month, is that right?
That's right, yeah. $3,333 per month per entity, which would be for the nine months.
Nine months.
Yeah.
But looking forward, past July 1, when you mentioned emergency services, did you mean emergency management?
I think they'd be in that.
They, they have authorities to levy for something like that?
What could happen is, is that there can be a essential services levy or essential service vote by the county or by the city to levy for essential services, which then could be a levy, which is not outside of emergency management. It's an essential service levy that's actually levied through either the county or through a city.
So, we would have to have a referendum on that?
Correct.
There's probably certain dates when that can be submitted and voted upon.
I think the last discussion I heard Dee said we could get it on a ballot in 45 days. Does that sound about right?
So, there's probably a spring date and a fall date, is my guess, but...
So, again, that's for future, so...
Yeah, that's something down the road.
So...
Do we have, excuse me, Your Honor, do we have CAREZAC money left or ARPA money left that would come anywhere close?
We do.
Yes, we do.
About 270, right?
I'd have to go back and look.
Tony, we're a little over 300,000, I think.
Yeah, I was going to say 270 or 300.
Of CARE's money left?
Yeah.
ARPA.
ARPA money.
ARPA money.
270.
So, would that be used for that?
We had 1.5, and we gave roughly $1 million into the fire station and 250,000 to the childcare center. So, that leaves around 250 or 300, maybe a little more than 300 left over. Hasn't been allocated yet.
Well, this thing's out of the blue. I'm sure there's been some other asks for that money too, hasn't there?
Not yet.
Not yet.
Not yet. The question is...
Maybe things aren't totally impossible.
Yeah, does that qualify, Aaron?
I'd have to do some looking.
Does this qualify for ARPA?
I would guess probably, but I'm not sure.
And essential services.
Does it matter if people are spending money all over the place and not getting accounted for?
Yeah, we don't want to be audited, and that'll be ugly.
So, do you want to make a motion?
So, I will make a motion that we approve a up to amount of $30,000 to negotiate with CARE to continue to perform under the current contract.
You're talking per month?
No.
$30,000 total to perform for the, through the remainder of the contract.
That'd be $10,000 a month divided among the three entities.
It's, so it's $90,000 total for nine months, and it's $10,000, excuse me, $10,000 per month, $90,000 total divided by three entities, so it'd be $30,000 from city.
The city's country for $30,000.
With that understanding, a second motion.
One more thing to say on that. We had Bob Libby's wife tell us at one point verbally during our conference call with him that they could break even at that $10,000 a month. So, that's probably...
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second, second by Flornoy. Do you want to stipulate that it comes from general or that we check into ARPA? Does that matter at this point? Okay. You'll figure that out, Aaron. Okay.
Aaron, I can't.
I'll work on it.
Any, any discussion on that? Seeing none, please call the roll. Estee?
Yes.
Flornoy?
Yes.
Ham?
Yes.
Anderson?
Yes.
Rasmussen?
Yes.
To Hill?
Yes.
Gandy?
Yes.
Okay. Any other negotiating points at this juncture, do you think, Elizabeth?
No.
Probably not.
I think...
Yeah, for now.
For now.
Has either the other two entities discussed this already too, or approved anything?
I don't think so.
No.
Well...
Okay.
We're getting...
We're getting...
No, that's...
That's fine.
It would really just be the county then, whether they would, I think, the hospital.
My understanding is county attorney is going to be talking with the board supervisors about it. I don't know where the hospital is. I think Vanessa's been off on Christmas break for a few days, and she's in Brian Hunger's ear and Larry Peach's, and I think they just have a few more days of Larry Peach, and I think Larry has the figures in his head. So, I'm not sure who's coming on board to replace Larry, but I hope it's somebody that is a fast study.
So, I guess at this point, that's all on our agenda, and I guess we'll hear from you right after the 3rd.
Right.
And what our next step is.
Yeah, if we have something earth-shattering in the next six or seven days, worst-case scenario, 24-hour notice with media notice, we have to have an emergency meeting, but I don't think we will. I think probably the lines are drawn, and I'm sure that the things we served locally probably have made their way to Iowa City already. probably have made their way to Iowa City already. I have not scheduled the sheriff at Iowa City to deliver paperwork to Bob Libby's registered agent, but there's three other ways we could be serving them under the rules of civil procedure, but I think we've already got them in court, so...
Okay, all right.
I'm just waiting for a phone call from a lawyer from somewhere, and that hasn't happened yet.
Whenever. So, I just have one more question, I think, for Elizabeth, and that is, I assume after the first of the year, when you guys meet, you will be not only discussing this, the current contract, but on your agenda will be, what's the next contract look like for the next thing?
Yeah, and even before then, it's possible, because before the injunction, we notified them of the breach of the contract, and so kind of triggered that clause, so we're either going to be going into mediation, arbitration, that may happen before our board meeting, but certainly I think that, well, we'll see, we'll see if they want to continue with us and continue to negotiate. I think, as John said, they're probably reticent too, since pursuing them, but, yeah, we'll obviously have to be discussing what the future looks like.
Yeah, great. Okay, I think that's it. So, I take a motion to adjourn.
Salute.
Thank you, Tom.
Second.
And a second by Gandy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign.
All right.